There we go, okay. Going to call the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. First item is, roll call please.
Trustee Patel.
Present.
Trustee Claire.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Maday.
Present.
Trustee Bishki.
Present.
Trustee LaRosa.
Present.
President Daley.
Present. All present and accounted for this evening. I'd like to ask Clerk Jane Mutino to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if you have any electronic devices, cell phones, whatever that make noise, please turn those off so that we can have an undisturbed meeting. Next item is the approval of minutes for September 23rd, 2025. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
So, motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 23rd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of expenditures for $24,983,082.74.
Motion to approve the expenditures as presented.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the expenditures as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Presentations. We have this evening a presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award by Director of Finance Lisa Peterson.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am proud to present to you the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the village's fiscal year 25-26 budget as recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association. This award represents a significant achievement and means that Schaumburg meets the highest principles of governmental budgeting. As you know, the budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Additionally, this year's award receives special recognition for the inclusion of performance measures and the incorporation of strategic goals and strategies into this governing document. The annual budget takes months to create and involves all departments. And while it is a collaborative effort, I would like to give special recognition to Alex Thorpe, Andrew Buckwinkler, Michael Hess, and Paula Hewson for their hours of the countless hours of work, countless meetings, and exceptional skills in developing this award-winning financial plan. Of course, Brian Townsend is the editor-in-chief, and his direction and guidance is critical to our success. While all GFOA awards are special, the budget award is especially significant as it recognizes the months of hard work put into a document that is used regularly by the village board, department directors, residents, and other stakeholders. And finally, we thank the village board for your support and leadership, and we are proud to present you the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for fiscal year 26.
Thank you.
We have a certificate to present. [applause]
Why don't we do this? Why don't we? No, no, no. Turn here. Okay. Yeah, so you're gonna get pictures. Come on up, guys. Come on up. Couple over here, one over here, one over here. Okay, all right. Let's do it this way. Okay. Hold on. Okay, will you hold it? Okay.
You guys.
Fine. However. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, I will accept it, and then I'm gonna give it back to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take my glasses.
Yes. So, as this board is aware, the budget is a very, it's a thick document, but thinner than what it could be. It could be a lot thicker than what it is. Staff does a tremendous job in putting it together and making it easily to understand and follow, and the presentation that is made at budget time really helps to bring it all together. And so, you guys do an absolutely fabulous job, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We have a liquor license request from Ms. Christine Jackson for one class R liquor license. We were just at a ribbon cutting and enjoying a little bit of the food. This is for Gray's Craze located at 1437 West Schaumburg Road.
Yes, I see a lot of familiar faces that showed up.
Yes. So, just a little bit what your business is and, you know, what the purpose of the liquor license will be.
We are a charcuterie board business. We do small events. We do take it home for the night. We do picnic boxes. We do a lot of, we, basically, we celebrate everything. The point of getting the liquor license is we want to start classes for adults in the evenings. We want to actually do classes for everybody, but adults like their wine with their little board, so we wanted to get a liquor license so we can offer wine at our classes in the evening when we have them, about once a month for the adults. But we will also be doing classes for like kids or Girl Scouts and different things like that, so they won't have the liquor.
Yes. Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
No questions?
Food was excellent.
Thank you.
Very good job. So, with no questions from the board, you'll need to go to the liquor commissioner's office, which is fourth floor. It's also the mayor's office. Get whatever paperwork is necessary. You might have already gotten some of this. Background check is done. There's a payment of a fee, and then once all that's approved, then a license will be issued.
Okay.
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 Thank you. You're welcome to stay or leave if you're busy, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good night.
Consent agenda. The consent agenda will be read in its entirety and voted on as one motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk so that it can be removed from the consent agenda, discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on the consent agenda in one motion. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Number nine, liquor license requests, one-day liquor license requests. A, the motion would be to ratify the request from Mr. Nicky Lakomsky of Village Tavern and Grill for one Class D one-day liquor license for Schaumburg Live at 90 North Event held on September 27th, 2025 from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. at 2020 Parkside Drive and waive the fee. B, the motion would be to ratify the request from Mr. Jamie McAllister of the Schaumburg Park District Foundation for one Class D liquor license for Schaumburg Oktoberfest Event on October 4th, 2025 from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. at Minniki Park located at 220 East Weathersfield Way and waive the fee. C, the motion would be to ratify the request from Mr. Shashin Bias of Global Brew Tap House for one Class D liquor license for Schaumburg Oktoberfest Event on October 4th, 2025 from 12:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. at Minniki Park located at 220 Weathersfield Way and waive the fee. D, the motion would be to approve the request from Mr. Ryan Bishki of Schaumburg AM Rotary Club for one Class D liquor license for Blues Bourbon and Barbecue Event on October 18th, 2025 from 4:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. at the L Larson Prairie Center for the Arts located at 201 Schaumburg Court and waive the fee.
Can you indicate that I abstain for that?
Thank you. Number 10, correspondence. The motion would be to approve the request from Spring Valley Concert Band to hold a raffle on October 19th at L Larson Prairie Center for the Arts 201 Schaumburg Court and to waive the fidelity bond requirement. B, the motion would be to ratify the request from Vindi Yaranya Kanada Kuda for a raffle held on October 11th, 2025 at the L Larson Prairie Center for the Arts located at 201 Schaumburg Court and approve a variance to Chapter 117.31 since ticket price is greater than $5 and to waive the fidelity bond requirement. C, the motion would be to approve the request from Schaumburg AM Rotary Club Foundation to hold raffles on October 18th, 2025 at the L Larson Prairie Center for the Arts 201 Schaumburg Court and to approve a variance to Chapter 117.31 since ticket price is greater than $5 and to waive the fidelity bond requirement.
Can you indicate I abstain on this as well?
Thank you. Number 11, engineering and public works. The motion would be to authorize the village president and village clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Schaumburg and the Schaumburg Park District for the Schaumburg High School Bike Path from Vulcanings Lake to Schaumburg High School and approve the required resolution. B, the motion would be to approve waiver of competitive bidding and award the full landscape maintenance contract to Sebert Landscaping of Bartlett, Illinois beginning May 1st, 2026 for a term of one year with two one-year optional extensions not to exceed the approved budget. C, the motion would be to authorize participation in the OMNI contract and award the L Larson Prairie Center for the Arts Roof Restoration to Garland DBS, Inc. of Cleveland, Ohio in the amount of $235,081. D, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus vehicles as listed on the fiscal year 25-26 vehicle replacement schedule and approve the 2001 E1 Ladder Truck donation to Harper College. 12, transportation committee. The motion would be to authorize the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement with HR Green, Inc. of McHenry, Illinois for Phase 1 preliminary engineering services for Bodie Road Improvements Spring and Scooth Road to Braintree Drive in the amount of $199,900 and approve the required resolution. B, the motion would be to accept the findings of the Northwest Cook Transit Coordination Study. 13, Plan Commission. A, the motion would be to approve a floor area ratio FAR credit approval for Umen, Umen Residence 126 Dartford Lane. 14, Zoning Board of Appeals. A, the motion would be to approve a special use for a Type A restaurant for Colachi Tandoori Grill 1117 South Roselle Road. B, the motion would be to approve a site plan approval, special use for Type B restaurants, special use for drive-through, parking variation, landscape variation, and sign variation for Brewster's Real Ice Cream 1821 West Irving Park Road. C, the motion would be to approve a special use for a tattoo establishment for Razor Tattoo Studio, Inc., 636 South Roselle Road. 15, resolutions. The motion would be to, A, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-059 authorizing the village president and village clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Schaumburg and the Schaumburg Park District for the Schaumburg High School Bike Path from Vulcanings Lake to Schaumburg High School. B, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution Number R-25-060 authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute an agreement with HR Green, Inc. of McHenry, Illinois for Phase 1 preliminary engineering services for Bodie Road Improvements Spring and Scooth Road to Braintree Drive in the amount of $199,900. 16, ordinances. A, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-091 granting an approval of a floor area ratio FAR credit for Umen Residence 126 Dartford Lane. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-092 authorizing the disposal and donation of surplus personal property owned by the village of Schaumburg. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-093 granting a special use for a Type A restaurant for Colachi Tandoori Grill 1117 South Roselle Road. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-094 granting a site plan approval, special use for a Type B restaurant, special use for a drive-through, parking lot variation, landscape variation, and sign variation for Brewster's Real Ice Cream 1821 West Irving Park Road. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-095 granting a special use for a tattoo establishment for Razor Tattoo Studio, Inc., 636 South Roselle Road. F, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-096, amending ordinance number 23-059 with respect to the conditions for granting a site plan approval, rezone from B2 General Business District to B4 Retail Service and Motor Vehicle Business District, landscape variations, and plan of consolidation for Napleton Schaumburg Subaru, Inc., 200 West Higgins Road. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Mutino. I'm looking for a motion to approve. The consent agenda is read with item D under liquor license requests with an abstention from trustee Bishki, and the same for under item 10, correspondence, item C with an abstention for trustee Bishki on that item as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Maday.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Committee reports. We have none listed for this evening, but I'm aware. Comments from the public is an opportunity to speak before the village board on matters pertinent towards the village of Schaumburg. We only ask that you give us your name, address, and keep your comments to three minutes if possible. So, please come forward.
Village of Schaumburg Board, good evening. My name is Eric Refick, 14 Ascot Circle in Schaumburg. Recall back in July, I presented to you on behalf of impacted residents, sharing their sentiments regarding the planned new lighting and surveillance along the Schaumburg Sculpture Park, which runs along Jürgen Creek from the Prairie Center east to Plum Grove Road. This was done both in person and via follow-up emails, all months before this project's completion. Because of that, the board has had time to address this potentially aggravated situation. However, no feedback was ever provided back to impacted residents, nor were responses made to our last emails. As of this past Saturday night, the lighting was activated and stays on all night long. Per verbal confirmation from contractors finalizing the work, the project went ahead unchanged from its original plan. Clearly, no action was taken to address the expressed concerns of residents. The result? Quote, "sickening levels of parking lot level illumination, worse than the temporary Septemberfest floodlights, mind you. A former nature path transformed into a roadway lighting. Nearby resident properties instantly degraded and their reasonable expectations of privacy eliminated, all done under the cover of misguided and overzealous public safety." Taken at 3:00 this morning, the photo was emailed to each member of the board earlier today illustrate the impact along the path, and from one residence bedroom window, all of which will become exacerbated once the foliage disappears. I'll spare you the pictures that I sent, but they're very telling of how egregious this is. Consider this feedback public outcry over the indecision that has now adversely impacted us without our consent. Village decision-makers intentionally chose not to change course, degrading the lives of nearby residents by installing parking lot bright lighting in their backyards. 100% of all surveyed Sherwood Lane residents, that's the lane that abuts the path, which I've sent to you also in email, 100% of them, per the signed petition that was shared with you, agree with this consensus. This has completely transformed the dark landscape abutting their homes that they had enjoyed and cherished for over 50 years, as the board had been forewarned. We residents are left wondering why the village took this step that so adversely impacts us without our consideration. Why were nearby residents not notified about this project in advance? Why was there no public hearing for the installation of lights and surveillance cameras, as had been done in the past, with comparatively minor efforts, like with the community beer garden or bee garden nearby, with opportunities for public comment? No board members live here. Some of you may live in a nearby townhouse community. Some of you may have a single-family home with a private backyard. It's easy to make choices when your own backyard is far away and unimpacted. If each member of this board discovered that one night their once-private, dark, and sleepy backyard had been lit up like Walmart due to the actions of their local government, what would you do? If newly-installed government surveillance equipment was aimed towards your secluded backyards and homes, betraying homeowners' reasonable expectations of privacy, per Illinois law, mind you, how would board members react? Dark sky compliant? No. In our last correspondence, Mr. Townsend indicated that the lighting would be, quote, "dark sky compliant." These new lights are clearly labeled having 12,000 lumens. This output exceeds dark sky, pedestrian, comfort luminaire criteria maximums, both in light output brightness and lighting angles. It far outpaces the same criteria for residential areas, which, by the way, is limited to 1,000 lumens. Finally, no shielding has been installed on any of the pole lights. So, the new lighting violates dark sky principles. One, lighting is far brighter than necessary. Two, it is not focused directly down at the path and is unshielded. And three, it does not turn off at night after curfew. Can the village produce dark sky approval certificates required for compliance per Dark Sky International? And then finally, impact to wildlife. The fireflies and bats, which I spoke about in July, cannot tolerate this excessive lighting and will thus no longer exist along or near the sculpture path. Remember Tinker Bell's Hollow? Destroyed. Birds sensitive to such lighting will now nest elsewhere. Habitat has been completely altered. By taking this action, the village has forced nearby residents to collectively react to this negative situation. We request immediate removal or significant minimization of this lighting and removal of all cameras. What will the board do before we homeowners are forced into collective action?
Is that it?
It's not. We're hoping for an answer from the village board soon, but if you're asking if that concludes what I had to say to you today, that's it.
Yes, okay. So, just so you're aware, these lights were just recently installed. It is a work in progress. The village will be reviewing it and determining what further action might be necessary, such as whatever shielding might be necessary, adjustments to the lighting, et cetera, and all that. It's not an overzealous public safety. We are responsible for actually hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of sculptures that are in the back, some of which have been damaged over the years because of not having any lighting back there and any way of telling who vandalized that stuff, with not one complaint from anybody that there was people back there smashing stuff and destroying sculptures. We're responsible for that. And so, we have an obligation to ensure that we do what we can to protect those sculptures, and that's part of what this is. So, this is not an overzealous public safety issue. It's something that we have to do because we don't own the sculptures. The sculptures are owned by Chicago Antthenaeum. So, there's that. The use of government surveillance equipment, yes, in one sense, that's true because we do have cameras that we're looking to have there so that we can watch this, these sculptures and make sure they're there, they're sufficiently guarded. There is no, it's been mentioned before, and I'll repeat it, there will be no cameras that are going to be picking up anybody's houses, or even backyards for that matter. This is solely for the purpose of being able to watch over the sculptures that are there. So, and no, they will not be turned off at curfew. It's not going to do us any good to all of a sudden turn them off at 10 or 11 o'clock at night and allow vandals to come through then at midnight. So, that's not going to work. So, but it is a progress. It will be reviewed again. Staff, once this is fully done, and staff will have a chance to go out and take a good look at it and review it and determine what further action needs to be done at this point.
I appreciate those comments, President Daley. My mother here, who lives at the residence, who most of those photographs were taken from her backyard, I hope the village board can consider and take into account the adverse impact, especially to her home and other residents there. And I think it's clearly indicated, if you don't want to walk there, down there like 3:00 in the morning, like I did this morning, how it looks in the middle of the night and how her backyard is now, like I said, lit up like a Walmart parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else? Moving on, council report?
No report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, president's report. As you're aware, I submitted to the board a few changes to be made to committees and commissions, and I'm going to look for your concurrence. One is for the Electoral Commission. It's an appointment of Ted Rahn for a term that ends April 30th, 2026. Plan Commission is a removal of D2 Bagwa. And he would be removed and then appointed, well, so removed from the Plan Commission. Zoning Board of Appeals would be the removal of Sunil Shah, who resigned September 25th, 2025, and the appointment of D2 Bagwa to fill his term, which ends April 30th, 2027. Look for a concurrence on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to concur with the recommendation for the appointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I think that's all I have at this point. Managers report?
Good evening. I just have two items under my report this evening, both congratulatory items. First, for the 90 North Live Event that was held back on the 27th of September. I know Tiana and Matt are sitting over there somewhere. I can't see them. But I just- But I just wanna recognize Tiana Wyler and Matt Frank for their efforts to organize and execute that event. I know that they did get support and collaboration from a number of village departments that were there, but this was the inaugural event over at 90 North. I thought it was fantastic, both the events that were offered and the members of the community who came out to enjoy it. I know we're doing a debrief tomorrow morning to talk about that, but I hope that we'll be able to do more events like that in the future and get the community to enjoy the new public space that the village board has made available to them. Second, I want to thank Chief Wolf and Chief Pacini and their staffs for the Public Safety Open House that was held over the weekend. I was able to stop out for a while and see some of the demonstrations and see some of the activities that were offered. Really great event, great turnout from the community for that as well, and hopefully, some of those young children that were there will grow up one day to be police officers and firefighters. So, congratulations to you both on, on that event. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee comments and mentions? Yes, Trustee Patel.
I would like to wish everyone who all are celebrating Diwali, wishing everyone a joyful and prosperous Diwali and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Exactly when is that?
Next week.
Next week, okay. All right. I think I have invites in my email. Thank you very much. Let me look for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with Section 2, subsection C1 of the Open Meetings Act. Personnel, the, for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, including hear and testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
So moved.
Just that we will not be coming back out. We'll be adjourning the meeting from closed session.
Second.
So, motion and a second to go into executive session. All those, roll call, please.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee LaRosa.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to cross them all.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, all right.
As long as it's open.
Yeah, so we will.